Hello, hi, everybody. Welcome to the 3:00 PM convening of the Joint Committees on Government Operations in our good friends from Public Safety and Military Affairs.
Not just friends, good friends.
Good friends, hopefully. On Tuesday, February 6, 2024, at 3:00 PM, we are convened in conference room 225. This meeting is being streamed live on YouTube. In the unlikely event that we have to abruptly end this hearing due to technical difficulties, this committee will reconvene to discuss any outstanding business at 3:30 PM Thursday, February 8, conference room 225. And a public notice will be posted on the Legislature's website to that effect. So with that, we will go ahead and start our agenda. First up on the agenda, we have House Bill, sorry, Senate Bill, flashback, 2058 relating to neighborhood boards. This will define community outreach board to mean a board established to serve in a community advisory capacity under a county commission or a county department. Includes community outreach boards under existing provisions of the Sunshine Law regarding neighborhood boards. Authorizes neighborhood boards or community outreach board members to organize meetings or presentations related to official board business statewide. With that, we have first up Cheryl Park, Director for the Office of Information Practices.
I'll just stand right there and just hopefully suggest to you.
Okay. Next up, we have Brett Colbus, an individual. And he is in opposition. We also have Justin Silva, an individual. They are in support. We have Nancy Pasicchio, member of the KCD PAC, who's here in support. Oh, sorry, this stands for Kona Community Development Plan Action Committee. She is in support. Is she here on Zoom? Okay. Next, we'll go to Patricia Beekman, individual in opposition. Is she here? She's not. Ben Krebs, Staff Attorney for the Public First Law Center.
Good afternoon, Chair. Thank you.
Vice Chair. Ben Krebs for the Public First Law Center. We support the intent of this bill, but we've offered a few clarifying amendments in our testimony, and I'm happy to answer your questions.
Okay. Thank you so much. That's all we have on the testifiers list. Is there anybody in the audience or Zoom land who wishes to testify? Seeing none, members of the committees, are there any questions? Sure?
I'm so sure.
Okay. I have one of Mr. Krebs. So, I mean, OIP offered an amendment to the bill. Have you had a chance to look at their amendment?
I have not.
And what your reaction might be?
I have not.
Maybe that's something that if we move the bill forward, you might be able to discuss with them?
Oh, absolutely.
And do you think, I mean, it seems to wrap up neighborhood boards, right? Of course, which are only of Oahu.
Correct.
So if they were, boards were taken out of it, do you think that would probably address the, what the intent of the bill was trying to do?
I think that would clean it up a little bit. A couple of the amendments we had offered were just sort of clarifying some things that don't apply to the community outreach boards, for example. But our concern is with the enabling the boards to organize meetings as well as allowing the outreach boards to be formed by commissions. So in the case of commission, you know, the commission could go out already under the Sunshine Law, 92-2.5, and attend informational meetings. So it would appear that it might not be totally necessary for commissions. And as far as organizing the meetings, you know, right now, the intent of that section is to allow neighborhood boards to go out and attend informational meetings, but not to organize them themselves. And so you can look in the text of that provision actually provides that you can go to an informational meeting, but it shall not be, you know, basically directly held for the board. So we think if you take out the organize, that that would address our concerns.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you so much. Any other questions from anybody?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi. I don't have anybody from the county, though, right? Is there anybody from the county? And it's like, I think you're the only one testifying. Come on, come on up.
No, we have a show.
OIP, there's OIP other than OIP. Could you give me an example of community outreach board?
I don't have any examples. Currently, I'm not aware of any.
Yeah, I don't think so. Okay, so what prevents the county from just creating boards? I mean, this seems to me that we are requiring, I guess, suppression notice and some kind of restrictions should a community outreach board be created. I mean, right now, who has authority to create community outreach boards?
So this, this bill would be creating those brand new, those would be, you know, a new type of board created by this bill. So this bill proposes to have county commissions and county departments form these community outreach boards.
So.
But as I understand it right now, there's just.
They do it already. Maui just did it during the emergency proclamation. It's the subject of another bill, so far as there are applications.
I'm trying to figure out why we are passing a bill telling the county how they do their boards without having the county testify as to whether or not.
I, I think that's a fair point, and I think it would also help to flesh out just what exactly the intent of this measure is.
I, yeah. Because I know, I mean, Senator McElvee's point, when we had a 2018 law upload, that basically the county created certain, a number of different like committees and boards and the like. You know, unless I see a timeline, I don't see why we shouldn't have this bill. I'm sorry.
But that's okay. Could this bill be remodded to address the things that we just brought up, just to ensure that when new special commissions or groups are created by the county, that they fall under Sunshine?
Absolutely.
Okay, that would probably be a better.
So that's basically it. It requires any kind of board created by the county to be, to be under Sunshine.
Yeah. But the things that are being discussed by these emergency standard boards and commissions are critical. Decisions are being made that would affect spending and policy and everything. So, but I appreciate you being here and jumping in on this.
Yeah, sorry.
No, no, no.
So, so thank you.
Thank you. We have a lot of pressing things in the PSN. Members, are there any other questions of any of the parties that are here on this measure? If not, you want to just briefly? Okay, so we're not going to skip into a formal DM between the two committees, but however, in talking story with my good friend from the Committee on Public Safety, we're going to defer decision-making on government operations for this item on the agenda Thursday, February 8, 2024, at 3:02 PM in conference room 225, Thursday.
I'll be there.
You'll be there? Okay, this adjourns the hearing on this point. Hello, hi, everybody. Welcome to the Committee on Government Operations. This is a decision-making, following measures that were heard previously. And so we'd like to go in with Senate Bill 2579 relating to bottle filling stations. Members, we're going to do a Senate Draft 1, and what I'd like to do is to take the DAG's suggested amendments, include the language, "For any new state building construction beginning July 1 of 2025 or after where drinking fountain is required, there shall also be a bottle filling station or a combined bottle filling station and drinking fountain." And we will also take in their suggested amendment, "The requirement does not extend to any new state buildings for which the agency is responsible for construction. Determines that compliance with the requirement may present a health, safety, or security risk." And of course, for further discussion on the amendments, a defective date of 2112. And finally, the committee report, we do want to know if the individual testified that DAGs may not require a statute to do this, and so we'll have the next committee maybe look at that further. Members, questions or comments? If not, Vice Chair, 2579, Senate Draft 1.
Chair's recommendations to pass SB 2579, amendments. Chairman Kelby?
Yes.
Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Sandwin and Ventura?
Aye.
Senator Waka?
Yes.
Senator Awah? Excuse, the measure passes.
Thank you so much, everybody. Senate Bill 2317 relating to state Capitol tours. We were working on this one last year, and there was some good conversations going on, but we ran out of time. And talking to the author, nice to give him more time to talk to the entities involved in this. So we'd like to move this on with a defective date of 2112, and we want to, in the committee report, note the conversations going on last year on the measure and hopefully have them continue. The Governor's Office and Friends of the Ilani Palace to try to bring back Capitol tours in some format using this bill. Members, questions or comments? If not, Vice Chair, 2317, Senate Draft 1.
Recommendations to pass this measure with amendments if a member is present? Are there any no votes or reservations? In the absence of Senator Awah, the measure passes.
Thank you very much. Senate Bill 2536, and this is a procurement preference one for accounting services, businesses. We wanted to look at the fact that it appeared to give a preference to out-of-state bidders. But however, we looked at the fact that this actually mirrors the software development preference. It's currently in HRS 103D-1006. So we're going to move this measure out as a Senate Draft 1, and we're going to go ahead and note that in the committee report, that the bid preference actually is for in-state. And then we'll also need to make some technical, non-substantive amendments that are needed for clarity, consistency, and style, and then a defective date of 2112 for further conversation. Members, questions or comments on 2536? If not us, Vice Chair, Senate Draft 1.
Senator, the recommendation, Chair's recommendations to pass SB 2536 with amendments with all members present? Are there any no votes or reservations? Hearing none, the measure passes.
Thank you. 2116. 21. You good?
No, we just want to make sure that Senator Awah is present.
All right. Okay. 2116 relating to board meetings. What we're going to do is on this one here, we want to continue, this is a conversation of a bill that happened last year. We believe that with cloud technology, there's no reason why not to be able to have the board meetings online, and a lot of the discussions that happens, like on some of these professional licensing boards, are reported to the members. So we're going to move this on with a defective date of 2112, and we're going to require the archive of both meeting minutes and video to be on a cloud platform. And we're also going to require them, these boards, to allow for hybrid meetings, and we think this will strike a balance in what's been softened the bill. To discuss that change further, a defective date of 2112. Members, questions or comments? If not, Vice Chair, 2116, Senate Draft 1.
Recommend, recommendations to pass SB 2116 with amendments if the members present? Any no votes or reservations? Hearing none, the measure passes.
Thank you very much. Let's see. 2517 relating to public agency meetings. What we're going to do on this one is we'd like to continue the discussion, and so we're going to take OIP suggested amendments by Page 1, Line 2, to read, adding a new section to Part 1 to be appropriately designated, and also on Page 1, Lines 5 to 6, to read of the head of any agency or division of the state or its political subdivisions, and change shall be in a manner, same manner as a public item on the board's agenda, to shall not be done in executive session. And a defective date of 2112 for further conversations. Members, questions or comments? If not, Vice Chair, Senate Draft 1.
Chair's recommendations to pass SB 2517 with amendments? Members present, any no votes or reservations? Hearing none, the measure passes.
Thank you very much. Senate Bill 2172 relating to boards and commissions. This one here, we are going to go ahead and defer time certain to Thursday, February 8, 2024, at 3:01 PM in this room to take a more in-depth look at the bill and the subject matter. That's all we have. Hello, hi, everybody. Welcome to the Government Operations Committee, our 3:10 agenda in the C. Tuesday, February 6, 2024, we're convened in conference room 225. This meeting is being streamed live on YouTube. In the unlikely event that we have to abruptly end this hearing due to technical difficulties, the committee will reconvene to discuss any outstanding business at 3:30 PM Thursday, February 8, 2024, conference room 225. And a public notice will be posted on the Legislature's website to that effect. With that, we will start on our agenda. First item is 3028 relating to 911 services. First up, we have Leo Sanchnan testifying for PUC.
Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Sanan Sanchnan. You're placed, Leo Sanchnan. We stand on our written testimony and are available for any comments. Okay, or questions?
Questions or comments? Comptroller, Mr. Eagle.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair. We stand on our written testimony in support of this measure. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Royce Murakami, Executive Director, 911 Enhanced Board.
Good afternoon, Chair. Vice Chair and committee members, I stand on my written testimony. Incredible for questions.
Thank you so much. Let's see, we have Matthew Kurihara, Captain of Communications Division, HPD, testifying in support. Sheldon Howe, Fire Chief, Honolulu Fire. Oh, I'm sorry, we have, sorry, sir, go ahead, Honolulu Police Department.
Oh, sorry, sir. Good morning. We would start on our written testimony as well. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for being here, sir. Now we'll go to Mr. Howe, Fire Chief, Honolulu Fire Department, written in support. Benjamin Muscovitz, Police Chief for Hawaii Police Department, written in support. And then late, we have from Elliott Key, Assistant Chief, Kauai Police Department, in support. We have Doug Murdock, ETS, written in support. Justin Silva, individual, written in support. We also have Dalen Raccario, who's an EMS dispatch coordinator, written in support, and Greg Okamoto, Assistant Chief of Maui Police Department, in support. Also have Louis Salavaria, Budget and Finance, comments on the measure. And then finally, Carol Lee Kamikona, individual, written in support. And late, from Mr. Charles Johnson, individual in support. That's all we have on this measure. Is there anybody in the audience or Zoom land to testify? Seeing none, questions, members? Questions of the Enhanced 911? Getting rid of this term right here, I mean, why is it so important to get rid of Enhanced 911?
Previously, it was wireless because of text to 911. And then with next generation 911, it just ensures that the counties will be able to be reimbursed for that specific technology, because technology always keeps it advanced. Just to generalize it.
Okay, so basically, no matter what happens in the future, then it could be flexibly spent on upgrades?
Yes, so all 911 services.
How much is in the fund right now?
Forty million, and 28 million.
So unencumbered 28 million. So what are you planning to spend on that, on unencumbered 28 million on?
Majority of it will be for next generation 911. We had a consultant do a cost analysis, so it would be around 7.5 million. It would take about two years, barring no setbacks, to complete the transition, plus any other projects that may come up.
Okay, so it's going to be about eight million is what you have scheduled right now. So the rest of the amount then would sit unencumbered, the 20 million or so?
There are other contracts that are coming up. For example, I know HPD did their CAD system upgrade. That was a few years ago. That was about an even dollar project, but that encumbrance is coming to an end, so they're going to either have to extend that contract.
Could you use that remaining unencumbered money to help the counties facilitate, you know, infrastructure upgrades on their end for 911 for future technologies?
As long as it's for 911 services.
That's quite a bit of funds in there, of course, with people's cell phone bills, cost of living, so. Absent that, then, you know, to have that kind of funding available, and only eight million scheduled, you can see why we want to look at what's going to charge people, right?
Of course.
Okay. Yes, please, sir.
Sorry, can I take a different tactic? Rather than just finding more uses for the money, how about providing relief to people for why ignoring their cell phone bills? Could we go down that route? Is it 60-something cents?
66 cents.
Per month? I mean, could we lower that for the consumers and ultimately benefit all of us?
It can definitely be looked at and bring it to the board, but it's 60 cents per, per call.
Per month?
No, not per month, per call.
You're sitting on a lot of extra money in there, I think. This could help, Lord, a smidgen, the cost of living for everyone in the state.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next bill on the agenda, which is Senate Bill 2644. And my apologies, I accidentally merged this testimony list with the last one. So on 2644, Louis Salavaria, Budget and Finance. They have comments. Justin Silva, individual, written in support. Carol Lee Kamikona, individual in support. And then finally, late from Charles Johnson, individual in support. That's all we have on 2644, and considering there's nobody here to testify or ask questions of, we'll move on to the next bill on the agenda. For whom, we have a little star power in the moment for, Senate Bill 3169, Our Lieutenant Governor.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair and Vice Chair, and the members of the committee, testifying in support of Senate Bill 3169. We're in full support and will be available for questions.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you being here in person. And then there's an individual, though, who's got concerns, Mr. Justin Silva in opposition, written. That's all we have on 3169. Is there anybody wishing to testify, either in the audience or on Zoom? If not, members, any question on the Lieutenant Governor? No? Okay, well, thank you so much for being here. Appreciate your service to the state of what, contrary to what the House says. Next bill on the agenda is Senate Bill 3184, and that is relating to procurement. This is the 103D 307 Equipment Failures and Repair of Public Property Measure. First up, we have testifying for Department of Law Enforcement, Michael Vincent Orgero.
Michael Vincent, Deputy Director for Administration, Department of Law Enforcement, Chairman Kelby, Vice Chair Gabbard, members of the committee. The Department stands in support of the bill and stands on our written testimony. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. We have late testimony from Stacy Aldrich, the State Librarian, Hawaii State Librarian System. They are in support of the measure. We have Bonnie Kahakui.
Good afternoon, Chairs, Vice Chairs, Bonnie Kahakui for the State Procurement Office. And I apologize for the late testimony. We stand on our written testimony in opposition of this bill and available for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. We also have a Mr. Justin Silva, individual, who submitted written testimony in support. That's all we have on the measures. Is there anybody in the audience or out on Zoom who wishes to testify? Seeing none, members, are there any questions? I have a quick question.
Yes, Chair.
Could, it seems to be implying like an emergency context, right? The bill, I mean, could they, could this already be done if, like this, you know, emergency situation, wouldn't you need a bill or laws except for from the procurement code? Could an emergency situation, they gain exemption?
The bill, the statute already exists to allow them to handle emergency procurements. The bill says that you can do it before the fact, after the fact. And so we've seen a lot of after-the-fact emergency procurements for all kinds of things, for shipwrecks and plumbing and HVAC and all kinds of things. So the information is already there, so we don't think it's necessary to include maintenance and repairs. If it's a true emergency that's affecting the health or welfare of employees or general public, they can take action immediately and then submit the forms for after-the-fact approvals.
Wasn't there a situation recently where there was an after-the-fact supplemental that seemed not to be valid, I guess? I mean, what happens when an agency does that and then they know that down after the fact primitive or thing gets put in as a procurement violation?
Basically, yes. So what we, normally procurement violations, they have known about the situation for months or even, or even years, and then they're now coming in, they've let it get to the point where it's irreparable, or maybe it's, it's so, it's so beyond damage that it can't be reversed. And so in those cases, we will ask them to submit their own violation, because you should have taken action up to that point. So, but there are some repairs, like the Kona Airport, they were planning to do the repairs to the runway, but due to, you know, weather-related, it just became unusable. And so those kinds of situations, we would certainly take that into consideration and approve those emergency procurements.
Thank you so much for explaining that. I appreciate it. Let's see, I'll bring a good friend up there from, didn't expect this, did you? You're, I know you're here to testify for the department, so, you know, this is out of your wheelhouse, I totally understand, but you heard her to think about why not just simply do it after the fact, act as you need to, and then submit after the fact?
Procurement is problematic at times, even on the best of days. When we have a system, from a law enforcement agency standpoint, if we have a communication system going down, if our computer-assisted dispatch, when it's up and running, goes down, if our case management system goes down, if our booking system goes down, we need to be able to go out and get it fixed. We need to be able to go out and get the equipment to replace it. And we typically will have a vendor that we've used to install it or that we're getting the equipment, but if we now have to go, because multiple people sell the particular equipment, because someone deems, well, you know, if you'd have took better care of it, it would have been a maintenance issue, this will at least allow us to keep it up and running and get it up, get things up and running as quickly as possible. I mean, the bill talks in terms of, you know, protecting public property. From a law enforcement standpoint, our big concern is the equipment and the systems that we have in place or that we will have in place to protect the public property, to allow our officers to be able to do their job and to keep them safe and keep the public safe.
Do you think we need to include, include the public property portion to make the bill effective for you guys, or?
Well, we're not so much concerned about that one. It's just, when you look at the, at the current language, you know, compelling urgency creates a threat to life, public health, welfare, or safety by reason of major natural disaster. Okay, that's taken care of, we're not talking about that. Epidemic, okay, riot, fire, such other reason as may be determined by the head of the purchasing agency. But then we get into after-the-fact, someone Monday morning quarterbacking that decision. So the two things that we're kind of looking at is the first one, you know, similar events lesser extent by reason of equipment failures, repairs, and then the latter one, prevent or minimize serious disruption of continuous functioning of government services. Those are the two that we're really concerned with.
Okay. What if it was only narrow to just you guys? Would that be?
I'm, I'm sure that there's other agencies that deal with.
Well, you're the procurement officer. There's also, there's also agencies to which, you know, this has been after the fact was saw, but yet, as a matter of systemic review, maintenance, and such, the situation was, had gotten to that point. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, oh, no, I understand. I've been on the other end when I was with my prior agency. I know exactly what Bonnie's talking about.
Okay. Well, thank you for coming up and sharing that with us. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Next, we have Senate Bill 2816 relating to the Office of Lieutenant Governor, the Apostile Bill. Again, first up, Lieutenant Governor.
Chair, Vice Chair, and the members of the committee. For Senate Bill 2816, we stand on our testimony with comments available for any questions.
Thank you for being here and giving us the comments on this. For being here and giving us the comments on this. Candace Park, Deputy Attorney General.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. We do have concerns regarding this bill. First, I'll just summarize. There needs to be an appropriation out of the fund established in order for money to be spent. Second, there's the Part Two, Section Four presents a subject title problem. The Section Four deals with state agencies, but the title of the bill is Office of Lieutenant Governor. And then Part Two, Section Five, amend Section 91-4A, and the amendment is regarding proposed rules, yet that Section 91-4A is regarding rules that have already been approved by the governor. So I believe that is a little bit misplaced. I'm available for questions.
Okay, thank you for being here, we appreciate it. Next up, we have Ted Kapalis, Director of Strategic Campaign, Grassroots Institute. He has written comments and then Justin Silva, individual, written in opposition. That's all we've received on 2816. Is there anybody who would like to testify in the audience or on Zoom land? Seeing none, questions? Quick question, Lieutenant Governor? Last year, you were in support of the bill, right? And then now you're commenting on it. Is this not a good vehicle to try to effectuate this?
So the last year's bill was just a portion of the bill. This merges various bills into one bill. So it merged various bills that were floating. That's why we agree with the Attorney General's office about the title problems and other issues.
What if we struck out all those problematic sections? And, you know, is the bill worth to continue to move to keep that thing going?
Yeah, I think part of the bill is similar to the other bill that we testify relating to the certification of documents. So I think if that portion is kept intact, because that is the statutory function of our office, I think that could be workable.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Any other questions, members? Not, we'll move on to the next bill on the agenda, 2873, last in the fast. First up, Director Regan, a comptroller.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair Keith Regan, comptroller for the state of Hawaii, Department of Accounting and General Services. Regarding Senate Bill 2873, we stand on our written testimony in support. Also joining me here today is our state archivist, if there's any questions regarding the measure.
Okay, thank you so much. We have written testimony from an individual, Justin Silva, in opposition. Well, he's a hard guy to please, I tell you. Anybody else in the audience or in Zoom land wishing to testify? Seeing none, members, are there any questions? Just a real quick question for Director Regan. Do you think, are there any technical things with the bill that your department would like to see us address? Or do you think in the way it's written and drafted, it can pretty much go?
Chair, I do believe that the bill is acceptable in its current state. The only thing we would ask is that if there is an opportunity to provide funding as it relates to the commission, because part of the bill talks about travel costs and reimbursements, talks about providing some staffing, and then also access to a cultural advisor. And so I think just ensuring that there's maybe some funding associated.
Can you cross that out?
We can, yeah, I don't have the numbers for you right now, but give you an idea, yeah, ballpark on that.
Okay, well, we'll see what we can do. If the referral pattern even allows us to.
Thank you for that. Thank you, Chair.
Appreciate it. Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Lieutenant Governor. 2816, right?
No, no, we're 2873 now, but you can go back to that one if you want.
Yeah.
Yeah, why not? You're still hanging around.
I must be sleeping, I apologize, 2816. So, um, my concerns regarding, so according to this bill, all administrative rules will be put on the Lieutenant Governor's website? Is that your understanding? Or it's going to be your responsibility to ensure that all administrative rules are up for whatever department or whatever agents?
Yeah, so the way that we look at this bill is it's a combination of various bills that were floated in the Senate last year. And thanks to Senator Richards and many others, they wanted to just kind of put all the different bills together. So that's why it's but in that form, it's problematic because it's various forms into one title. For administrative rule purposes, I think there is still a it's still a good process if at some point in time, either the Lieutenant Governor's office or one agency becomes the conduit for searchable data for administrative rules or central place for administrative rules. We're not at that point yet, and so, you know, I mean, it's something that can be worked on if it's wishes of the legislature.
Okay, so your comment section would be in this new requirement that, because it says here, shall make available on the website of the Office of the Lieutenant Governor, the rules being, I mean, for all state agents. Because I could see that being problematic. I mean, we have a number of hemp rules that's being promulgated now that the Attorney General is submitting online that hasn't yet been approved of and.
Right, so the way that I read the bill as drafted
Yeah.
is that once it is finalized, and now it's making action. What we understand it because is that while the bills are, while the different rules are being promulgated by the different agencies, if there's one central place that people could go to to look at all the different areas. So for instance, if we were to look at either, you know, whether it's medical marijuana or whatever land use, it could be in different agencies or different departments. And if they could go to one central locations where they could say, hey, you know what? D, relating to this app or this bill, it's all being, it touches, sometimes things touch in different agencies and different departments, and a lay individual may not know where to go to. And so if they can do it in one central place.
Yeah, so you're looking for, couldn't type in cannabis and you find the admin rules.
So it'll be searchable.
Correct.
But then you folks will provide links also, it's my, I'm hoping, so that they can actually be like for the various departments, because.
I think that was the, that was the vision of the Senate and the legislature last year when we had this discussion, that it would be searchable, and then if there will be links.
So that it can, it can do a cross reference. So if you open up, I'm going to do an example of hemp, because I just have because of the cannabis expo during the weekend, and we're already talking to hemp farmers, and we're talking about the cannabis bills. They're supposed to be, it's going to be problematic, that the hemp administrative rules are going to be problematic. But we want to make sure that the public is going to be able to cross reference it exactly like what Senator McKelvey's talking about, that the pro-cannabis people will be able to search cannabis and still be able to see the hemp bricks, whether or not it would be part of Ag or the Lieutenant Governor, that's what I'm concerned about.
Yeah.
Nobody looks at the Lieutenant Governor site.
So we're just hoping that everything, you know, if we were to do a kind of a first of all, you know, this is not something that our office is pushing for. And then this is something that through the discussion with the legislature last year, members felt that there should be one central location where they can link up to each other. Because unless you, so for instance, even hemp legislation, whether it's Department of Health, Department of Public Safety, Department of Ag, they might all be promulgating rules at the same time. But if there's a method where you.
For, you have a singular portal.
So what's wrong with the ihabai.gov site, which already has links to the various agencies and the various departments? Because at least it's one central site, and we could look at not only hemp, but I'm thinking also all the Kupuna Caregiver administrative rules and.
Yeah, so that could be another option as well. I think last year, when this bill was discussed, members felt that, okay, you know, since the Lieutenant Governor's office already has the responsibility to look at admin rules, post it and keep it on file, they thought this was a function that we could do. We are amenable to it, but, you know, this is not something that our office is pushing. But let me give you kind of another example. Some of the rules are not searchable, and some of the rules are very antiquated to a point where we have IRB staff who come on a regular basis to manually, manually compare word for word some of the rules. And so at some point in time, you know, I mean, this is the government of GVO committee. At some point in time, if the vision is to have that all searchable text form and make it accessible, I think, you know, we would definitely be in support. You're right, you know, Lieutenant Governor's portal may not be the most optimal. You know, it could be a some kind of another portal that people are familiar with, and I can talk about some similar situation in another bill that's coming up. But, you know, I think for us as policymakers and someone, as we try to be more accessible and transparent to the public, we have to do better in making sure that things are searchable and things are accessible.
Okay, and thank you, Lieutenant Governor. So I agree with the concept, I disagree that it should be the Lieutenant Governor's website, because I personally don't. I love you, but I don't go to your website.
Yeah, no, and that's something, that's not something that we thought of.
They would advertise it, put it out there so that you go into the search engine and type up admin rules Hawaii, the portal would pop up.
Okay.
Disaster.gov, which becomes an all in one.
We already have an ihabai.gov, why can't you just put a postal there to attach administrative rules?
So maybe that's the portal there.
We already have a portal.
Yeah.
So that's the reason I'm thinking, why is it, should be, okay.
Thank you.
That's my concern.
I hear you, that's why we did it here. Okay, back to 2873, naming commission. Naming Commission, no, naming commission, okay. Next up, 2403, oh, sorry. Let's see, 2403 is the next one relating to government accountability, requires a report of a study or an audit enacted with a legislative appropriation or adopted to actually be a hearing on that report. First up, Office of the Auditor. We have written in support. Next up, Justin Silva, individual, he likes this one, in support. And Keola Kahikina, individual, written in support. That's all we have on 2403, considering there's nobody here to testify, we'll move on to the next bill on the agenda. Senate Bill 3171, meeting notices. And first up, let me guess, it is going to be University of Hawaii. Board of Regents, they've submitted comments, I still have to take the issue up with their next meeting. Now, Lieutenant Governor.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, in strong support. If I could just take a few, you know, moment to just explain this thing. Those, the law requires that we manually post hearing notices or agendas on a bulletin board at the state Capitol. And for months now, that bulletin board has been a construction site. And so because of that, we can't manually post. But that's an example of some of the antiquated system and statutory requirements that we have. And as we move towards paperless and more accessibility, requiring individuals to come to the Capitol to look at where the agendas are is not a workable solution in many, you know, for many individuals. So what we would like to do is have agendas posted on our web portal. But at the same time, there is also a central calendar that agendas get posted, and we can push that out. If individuals would still like to have a paper format, they could come to our office and we will print paper options. But right now, because of this manual posting requirements, departments are required to fax us their agendas. And sometimes because of malfunction in the fax machine or whatever it is, sometimes we only get one side of the paper, sometimes, you know, sometimes paper could be missing. And then downstairs, depending on if people are being disruptive and they remove certain agendas, people are depending on those agendas to be true, and that's, you know, we're trying to correct that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next up, we have Don Chang, Dylan R.
Sorry, don't get Don, but I'm Pua Iu. We're supportive of this bill for many of the reasons that the Lieutenant Governor has already mentioned. So we stand on our testimony in support.
So much. Cheryl Park, Office of Information Practices.
Hello, senators, Cheryl Park. We'd go one step further than the Lieutenant Governor on this, actually, and we wonder why we even have that requirement anymore for the notices to be sent to the LG or the Kirk's Office. This was from, you know, like 10 years ago, we switched over to the state calendar, and the counties all have their electronic calendars. So all these meeting notices are being posted on the county or state calendars. It doesn't make any more sense to require the LG to post something here in the Capitol, especially when the Capitol isn't even fully accessible. So we would say just take out that whole requirement, and I'm sure you'd agree with that, right, Lieutenant Governor?
Could just abolish everything?
Just take out that one sentence in the law, you don't need it anymore. It's, it's, it's not doing anything. If people want paper copies, they can ask the board, I mean, to send them a copy. So I would say just take out from line eight, the sentence that starts with the board shall file a copy of the notice with the Office of the Lieutenant Governor or appropriate county Kirk's Office, and take out that whole sentence that ends on line 17. Simplify it.
Take out the whole bill, all right. All right, that makes it a lot less paper to print. Thank you for that testimony, we appreciate it. Let's see, Alice Lee, individual, Council Chair, written in support. We have Sterling Marita, SPJ President, Watney Society of Journalists, written in support. And Justin Silva likes this one, individual in support. That's all we have on the measure. Anybody in the audience or Zoom wishing to testify? If not, members, are there any questions? I have one, Lieutenant Governor. So what do you think about the suggestion from OIP that we go ahead and take a little more weight off this paper by deleting lines eight and 17?
Yeah, no, we are in agreement with that. You know, we wanted to just provide a service to the public. If anybody wants any kind of paper copy, we would be amenable to that. But it really doesn't make sense, especially when we're pushing the state's central calendar system.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, thank you for that, appreciate it. We'll move on to the next bill on the agenda, which is 2288 relating to government. This is a one requiring a travel report. First up, we have Watney State Department of Education.
Good afternoon, Chairman McKelvey, Vice Chair Gabbard, and members of the committee. Brian Hall, Assistant Superintendent of the Office of Fiscal Services on behalf of the Department of Education. The department submitted testimony with comments on this measure. The department is supportive of transparency and accountability. We have just three points. Clarification would be helpful in terms of what type of travel related expenses would this include mileage? If there is same day travel and there's mileage involved or and parking fees, and it's that kind of information is wanted. Also, there's a term other representatives, and there's a wondering would that include students and chaperones that may be traveling for athletic events, or, you know, what is official state travel? And thirdly, given that our current travel form, format, and we had over 3,000 trips taken last year, both out of state and inter-island, there could be considerable time and effort required to redact PII. PII is a very broad term, it is anything that associates an activity with an individual. Yeah, yeah, exactly. Yeah, yeah, exactly. It's, it's, and it's in the bill. So we would just ask that consideration be given to allow time. The sooner that it would be required, there would be costs associated with, with complying. Added time could help us find ways to minimize that cost.
Okay, thank you very much. So you're looking at a delayed effective date then?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Uh, next up, we have Michael Vincent from the Department of Law Enforcement.
Yeah, Chair McKelvey, Vice Chairman, members of the committee. Department of Law Enforcement supports the bill. What we would like to is we've got a recommended amendment to exempt or limit the information coming from a law enforcement agency with respect to operations, law enforcement operations. So if we're transporting custody, if we are going to an island to engage in some law enforcement operation, whether it's participating on a task force, fugitive recovery detail, investigations, things that might compromise the safety of the officers or the safety of those that they are working with. So that's, we've got some, some language that we're suggesting to go in there to just kind of exempt that. We're not saying don't report it, it's just what do we report or when do we report it? Thank you.
Thank you so much for testimony and being here on that. We also have Keith Regan, Comptroller.
New Chair, Vice Chair. Members, Keith Regan, State Comptroller, Department of Accounting and General Services. We stand on our written testimony and support of SB 2288. Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here. We also have Dane Wicker.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Dane Wicker, Deputy Director, DAB. We stand on our testimony and support.
And finally, Justin Silva likes this one, individual in support. That's all we have on this measure. Is there anybody else in the audience or Zoom land that wishes to testify? Seeing none, members, questions? Quick question of the comptroller. You heard the testimony, Department of Education. Just to kind of respond, we are content.
You know, I, I think the DOE brings up some good points in terms of what data points should be included in what's being reported on the website and we're happy to accommodate that depending on what you put into the measure.
Okay, sounds good. And then what are the DLE suggestions?
Yep, I think, you know, there's, there's ways to program the site to mask those types of submittals so that they wouldn't be shown publicly.
Okay, thanks. Questions? Anybody? Fire to comment? We'll move on to the next bill on the agenda. 2139, first up, we have Public Records, waiving fees. First up is Louis Salavaria testifying for Budget and Finance, written with comments, DLR.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Finley on behalf of Chairperson Don Chang. DLR stands by its testimony in opposition. Ready for questions?
Uh, let's see, Anne Lopez, Attorney General's Office.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee and Stella Cam, Deputy Attorney General. We've submitted testimony in opposition and for the reasons stated in our testimony, including significant costs for searching, reviewing, segregating, based primarily on the employees who would be doing such tasks, especially within the Department of the Attorney General. We also have concerns about the public interest standard that we believe that it would pretty much waive all requests or our ability to charge for all requests.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see, next up, we have Kathy Betts, Law Renewal Services. They have comments. Keith Ayashi, Department of Education. They as well have comments. Cheryl Park.
Aloha. A version of this bill from last year, House Bill 719, SD2, is currently in conference. So OIP would respectfully recommend that it be used as a starting point rather than going back to square one as this bill does. However, our comments today address the bill as written. And I will summarize in 10 points our extensive written testimony. Number one, the objective evidence collected in the UIP record request logs since 2015 shows that the overwhelming majority of requesters pay no fees or costs, talking like about over 90% of state requesters and over 86% of county requesters in fiscal year 2023 paid nothing. OIP already, oh, who ends up paying these costs? This, the roughly 2 to 4% of people, depending if they're state or county, are attorneys, businesses, special interest groups, media and other entities. Now, OIP already protects against excessively high fees that are not justified as seen in OIP opinion number 23 dash 02. Currently, UIP record requesters are receiving the records much faster, usually within nine workdays as compared to requests made under the Federal Freedom of Information or FOIA Act, which typically takes the feds hundreds of days, if not years, to resolve. By incorporating portions of FOIA's more complex fee structure and waiver provisions that are inconsistent with the UIPA's infrastructure, this bill could increase the length of time for agencies to respond to UIP requests. Besides changing the standard for the public interest waiver, the bill would also make it a complete waiver of all fees, no matter how large the request would be in the case of public interest requests. And the bill's proposed caps of $5 and 750 respectively would, would allow the rates to, to be raised enough to reflect average current salaries from seven years ago in 2017, but not the collective bargaining or inflationary increases since then. And the statutory cap would then also operate as an, as an unfunded state mandate that must be paid out of county coffers. Now, without the ability to charge reasonable fees, vexatious and complex record requests will increase and interfere with agencies' ability to do their primary functions. Although Hawaii taxpayers fund agencies work, the UIPA currently does not allow for distinctions in fees and costs between requesters who are residents versus non-residents or between nonprofit or for-profit entities. Ironically, the proposed new public interest fee waiver standard would create a new distinction that would likely exclude requesters for for-profit media organizations, say Star Advertiser, who are currently allowed the public interest fee waiver under OIP's standard, under UIPA's current standards. So if this bill passes, we hope too that you will give us at least two to three years to implement its rules so that, I mean, it's, it's changes so that we have time to update our rules or you just write it into the law itself and we don't update our rules. Although we do have some other things that we have to update in our rules. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, but the bottom line to me is that this bill seeks to correct the problem that doesn't exist and it will create even more problems. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Tommy Johnson, Open Safety.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair. My name is Melanie Martin. I'm the Deputy Director for Administration. Obviously not Tommy Johnson, testifying on his behalf. I smile more than he does. Testifying, we stand on our written testimony on this bill, offering comments expressing strong concern. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Let's, Keith Regan, Comptroller.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Keith Regan, State Comptroller, Department of Accounting and General Services. We stand on our written testimony, providing comments on this measure. Also joining me today is our State Archivist, who could provide some additional insight as it relates to the impact that this bill may have on our operations.
Thank you so much. Let's see, Thomas William, Executive Director for the ERS, written with comments. Late, Sharon Hurd, Department of Ag. Have opposition testimony. Charlene Lau, Acting Major of Records and ID from HPD.
They are available on Zoom.
Okay. Oh, you're muted. Fortunately, you're still muted. We can't hear you. I don't know if she can hear us.
Okay. Sorry. Good afternoon, Chair. Good afternoon, Vice Chair. I'm Acting Major Carleen Lau of Records and Identification Division of HPD. We stand on our written testimony and I'm available for questions.
Okay, thank you so much for being here. Next up, we have Doug Mellor testifying for the Legal Women Voters of Watney. They have written in support. Ted, screw his name all the time, Capalis, Director of Strategic Campaigns for the Grassroots Institute. Written in support, Sterling Marita, journalist. Written in support as well. We have late from Carrie Anne Sharoda, Policy Director for ACLU Hawaii. Written in support. And then we have late from Calbert Young, University of Hawaii. And then finally, we have numerous individuals in support of the measure. Those who, we have Judge Daniel Foley, friend Justin Silva, Catherine Thyme, Mulaney Garcia, Magun Ohana, Rami Donahue and many others who are in support. We also have a lot of individual testimonies of people in opposition as well to the measure. See, we also have Mr. Ben Krebs.
Chair, we'll stand on our written testimony and comments.
Okay, thank you so much. Let's see, Noella Weingarten. Little testimony in opposition, Scott Shitko comments. And finally, late, late from Mr. James Wallace, individual in opposition. That's all we received on the measure. Anybody in the audience wishing to testify? Seeing none, members, are there any questions? Just a quick one for Mr. Krebs, I guess. Granted, we, you know, we've seen this bill before, but you know, are there times where the public interest is so overwhelming and so compelling that there shouldn't be any fees charged for public information related to it? I was specifically talking about the recent incidents in my neck of the woods, with the amount of decisions and things that are being done and made. And you know, in all disasters, you, when you hear about our stories of misspent money, decisions not made, do you think in that kind of an instance or is it overwhelming, compelling interest to not charge fees and record requests related to incidences like that?
From our perspective, yes. And we definitely support the intent of this measure, but we do think rulemaking is the more appropriate venue for addressing the issue.
Okay, so you think that this could be done through rulemaking and the measure wouldn't be needed then?
We do.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay. Let's see, that's all we have on 2139. Next up is we have Senate Bill 2281. And first up, we have Attorney General's Office.
Good afternoon, Chair McKelvey, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Robin Shun. I'm the Deputy in the Department of the Attorney General. The Department of the Attorney General has provided comments on SB 2281 to address the anticipated change in legislator salaries as stated in our written testimony.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Cheryl Park, OIP.
Will pretty much stand on our testimony. It's up to you guys. Thank you.
Justin Silva, individual, loves it.
Short and sweet.
Exactly. Fantastic. You guys were all fine anyway. Next up, Robert Colbertson, Hoolipack. Written in support. We also have several individuals, Lynn Matsual, El Tariqi and Brett Cobus. Two are in opposition, Tariqi and Cobus, and one Lynn is in support. And Ben Krebs, Public Person, sorry. This is 2281?
Oh, yeah, we will stand on our written testimony and support.
Okay, thank you so much. And that's all we have on 2281. Is there anybody else in the audience wishing to testify? Seeing none, members, are there any questions? None, we will move on to the next bill on the agenda, which is 2830. First up is UH Border Regents. Written in comments, Cheryl Park.
If we read the intent of this bill correctly, it seems to want to ensure that a group similar to the Build Beyond Barriers Working Group or something similar that was exempted from the Sunshine Law by emergency proclamation would in the future be automatically subject to the Sunshine Law. But that, that is based, I think, on an incorrect assumption that the BBB Working Group was not actually required to follow the Sunshine Law but for its exemption by emergency proclamation. So if the Sunshine Law were amended as proposed in this bill, the governor could, would still have the power to suspend the Sunshine Law, including the new definition of a board for a group created by emergency proclamation. So this bill wouldn't prevent the, the governor from creating a policymaking group exempted from the Sunshine Law using his emergency powers. And the Sunshine Law, as we interpret it, already includes people that have policymaking powers. So you don't need this definition to be added to the Sunshine Law. So I don't really see what this bill does. But I'll be happy to answer questions.
Okay, let's see, we have Doug Mellor, Legal Women Voters of Watney. Individual in support, Sterling Marita, Watney Chapter, Society of Professional Journalists. Written in support, Justin Silva again, written in support, and then Ben Krebs.
We'll stand on our written testimony and comments.
Okay, thank you so much. That's all we have on 2830. Is there anybody out there in the audience wishing to testify? Seeing none. Anybody out there? Not members, other questions at all? I have a question of OIP. I think what this bill seeks to get at is that you've had special, you know, you have groups stood up, courts of emergency that are not exempted from the Sunshine by emergency proclamation, but yet they're, they're having conversations and decisions and other things that are worthy of public disclosure notice because they carry huge policy spending decisions. So is there another way to try to achieve that policy?
Well, then, then a complaint should be made to OIP and we can look into it and tell those people, looks like you're, if they are a Sunshine Law policymaking type of board, you know, then why aren't they following the Sunshine Law? It's already there.
You're saying if they, if it fall back as well, it's been exempted under the county proclamation?
Okay, well, if it's exempted under a county proclamation, then I don't know, we'd have to look at the effect of the county. I mean, the creation.
I don't think it would persuade, but that's kind of the, and the, the thing is, it isn't to like, you know, go say, well, you guys are, it's the information being discussed and others are supposed to know are critical because it's, it's going to have quite a big impact, right?
So if it's a Sunshine Law board, you know, we would be saying you should be following the Sunshine Law. So it just depends on how it's created and if it's exempted, is it exempt under that emergency?
So, so your thing would be that the individuals in the community who are concerned about, they would be best to file a complaint with the OIP office.
Yeah, and we can look into it. And if it is a Sunshine Law board, ask the board or ask the board, why do you think you're not, why aren't you following the Sunshine Law board? Do you think you're exempt? Why? You know, that's what we, how we approach it.
Would this apply, then, okay, all right, thanks. Let's see, all right, that's it on that one. We're done with that. Aloha to that bill. Next up, Senate Bill 2597. This is one looking at clarifies the prohibition against boards and commissions to address the holdover issue. So first up, we have Yvonne Lau, UH Border Regents, written with comments, again, Justin Silva and Lynn Matsual, individuals written in support, and Rachel Weaver, individual in support. That's all. That's all we have on twenty-five ninety-seven, is there anybody in the audience wishing to testify? Anybody, anybody on Zoom? If not, and there's nobody to ask questions for, we'll move on to the next bill on the agenda, which is twenty-six thirty-nine, UH Border Regents, written with comments, Cheryl Park, OIP.
We support this bill because it aligns the, the mechanism for appealing from OIP Sunshine Law decisions to follow what people have to do to appeal from a, for a UIPA decision. Because it wasn't clear, we had a case where the Supreme Court said that a requester could actually sue OIP for a violation of the Sunshine Law that another board committed. It's not OIP violating the Sunshine Law, we're just interpreting and making legal determinations, so we shouldn't be the ones to be sued. Under the UIPA, what happens is that the requester can go to the court and sue the agency, you know, and we just be, our, our opinion would be considered in that case. If the请求is bringing the action, then it's a de novo review by this, by the courts. If the agency is challenging OIP's decision, then it's a much higher standard of review, palpably erroneous. The same thing, the same process should align for the Sunshine Law types of actions. One, one amendment we had was just a typo to say, shall here the challenged adverse determination de novo on page three, line seventeen, but other than that, we like this bill. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Grassroots Institute of Waukegan, written in support. Sterling Marita, Society of Waukegan Professional Journalists, written in support. Justin Silva, once again, big fan, in written in support. We've also received numerous of individual testimonies from about twenty, twenty-seven people in opposition, but it's not interesting, wonder if that isn't a product of a DDoS attack. Next up is, we do have Mr. Krebs, though, reading in real life.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members, members of the committee, we strongly support this bill. It proposes five amendments to the Sunshine Law that bring clarity to the enforcement rights and procedures, and it also makes the law more consistent with the UIPA, and addresses two issues that surfaced in a twenty-twenty Supreme Court decisions that tend to discourage going to OIP rather than the courts. We support this bill.
Thank you for being here, appreciate you being here. But finally, we have Noella Van Weingart, individual in written in opposition, that's all we received on twenty-six thirty-nine. Is there anybody else in the audience wishing to testify? Seeing none, members, are there any questions? Yes, please.
Okay, Cheryl, come on, come on up. So there are a number of people who oppose this bill because they believe it's limiting them to two years to file an action, to oppose an opinion by your office. So if we don't pass this, what's the statute of limitations now?
Well, under the Sunshine Law, they, they have ninety days to file a court action to challenge a final action of the board. Now, if they want to challenge our opinion, which might come out way after ninety days, they still have another two years to, to challenge our decision, you know, and, and if it's a requester, it's a de novo review, so it's like, the court doesn't even have to listen to our opinion if they didn't want to, because they can look at it completely anew. For agencies, of course, it's much higher standard of review. So I don't understand why they, they don't.
Why, why people are opposing?
Yeah, I don't think they maybe understand the legal implications of everything, is my guess.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's it?
That question, a very good point. Any other questions at all? If not, we will move on to Senate Bill six eighteen, due to a state permitting office. First up is Mr. Regan, Controller.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Keith Regan, Controller for the State of Hawaii Department of Accounting and General Services. We stand on our written comments regarding SB six-one-eight, this is a measure that we were aware of in the last session. We did, there was a House companion bill that we had submitted testimony on previously, and so we're going to stick to, you know, our points that we presented in that bill as well. Essentially, this would provide us, what we're recommending is the creation of a pilot project, so we can test it out if, so if the legislature decides that this is something that they would like us to work on. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Hey, we also have, let's see, Keith, Keith Hayashi, Superintendent of Education, Department of Education. Oh, yeah. Yeah, commenting.
Good afternoon, Chairman McAlvey, Vice Chair, gathered and committee members, Audrey Donovan, testifying on behalf of Department of Education, you have our written testimony and your comments, and I'll be here for any questions.
Thank you for the comments, appreciate you being here. Justin Silva, individual, on to your bill. But we also have Gifford Chang, individual, written in support. That's all we received on six eighteen, is there anybody in the audience wishing to testify? Seeing none, Zoom, anybody? Nope, seeing none, members, are there any questions, or guests?
Chair, can I ask?
Yeah, if you want to ask.
DOE? Aloha. Yes, I, I understand what you guys is trying to implicate on this bill, but I know for a fact, when it comes to the city on upcoming projects that is being held up because the city permitting department, DOE does take an advance work on the project and let the permitting process catch up. So this wasn't going to be for anything to do with DOE. Reason why we want to put it in DAGs, and DAGs would be perfect, because they have all the different city agencies and projects within their purview. So this is for the state projects that has been falling behind and lacking, so I just want to get clarification, because when I read the superintendent's testimony, that's the reason why he wrote his testimony, but that is not true with the DOE, because the DOE does start projects, and how I know that, because through my community, was started without city permits, because of the money lapsing. So with that being said, I just wanted to get that clarification from you, from, you know, to give to you guys.
Okay, but not all permits, we interfere.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so it's just important ones.
Yeah, right, important ones, so that's good, good to know. Chair, can I, yeah, thank you, thanks.
You rip, but mind, we have about five minutes left.
Two seconds, sorry, 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 Glenn. Two seconds. So you, you know how I feel about certain things you guys do, but I really have confidence that within this purview of us having our state roads, state buildings, state schools, everything to go forward, would you guys think you guys would be able to do something like this, if you guys, if the bill passed?
Chair, we certainly would be willing to take it on. We do need some additional funding, though, and support, so that we can stand up an office. We are asking in the measure to essentially do a pilot project, so that we can, like approve a concept, right? You know, in terms of being able to do it. So in order to stand up something like that, we're looking at about a million dollars for the first year, just to be able to have the infrastructure set up, and then about five hundred thousand each year subsequent to that, so.
Okay, with the delays of roads in my community and other communities, how much money you think we're losing on construction when it comes to delays?
That's hard for me to answer, but I can tell you that certainly with every month that passes, that a contractor is held up in terms of being able to proceed on a project, there are cost escalations that are based on that. So it is, there is a financial implication to delaying these permits from being able to move forward and issuing that notice to proceed.
So I'll give you an example, five years, nothing to do with your transportation, sorry, Chair, real quick. Yeah, was over twenty-five million more for the project because it was delayed for a year. So that's why I'm saying, you know, I understand the investment, but what about the ratifications of saving money? Yeah, thank you, Chair. Appreciate it.
I want to touch upon the pilot thing real quickly, because, you know, to, to stand this thing up, you know, obviously would take a lot of person, a lot of people, a lot of, but could this be useful, like, hearing the, like, in the, in the HRS four D two, or in the line of burn area, as a way to try to expedite and have a pilot to effectuate the immediate, these projects?
I think it certainly could help, but as it stands, this is really to focus on state facilities, right, state roads, state facilities, et cetera. So certainly in, in those areas where you have state facilities that were damaged or destroyed, this would help, you know, move those projects along quicker. But in terms of rebuilding the community, we just have to make sure that.
Well, this would obviously only apply to the infrastructure project.
Correct.
Yeah, but it would be an extra, couldn't you theoretically, potentially use FEMA monies and other things for this? State permitting office, if it was only limited to the state facilities in this area?
Yeah, I'd have to defer.
Like Hawaii do with the MKE?
Sure, I, Chair, I would have to defer to budget and finance, you know, in terms of what monies could be used to support it. All I'm asking for is the money that we need to be able to stand up the.
The cost wouldn't be as much though, if we were making it a pilot in that limited area, right?
If we're, you, you're just saying that in terms of not using this bill to do other facilities throughout the state, only focusing on the West Maui stuff. I'd have to confer with our, our Public Works Division to get an idea of what the cost might be for something like that, if it's only focused on West Maui.
Okay, yeah, just to expedite potentially use federal funds, but hopefully prove the concept, so that to my friend's point from, you know, West Oahu, that we can basically speed these things up, because there is a cost, which point.
There is.
And then we have supply chain issues, and then you have all sorts of other issues related, and the cost of materials, and it goes up.
And the cost of the community of not having that facility up and running and available, right?
Exactly. All right, well, thank you. Any last questions or thoughts? If not, that reaches to the end of the agenda. And so with that, we're going to go ahead and defer all of the, the bills on the agenda to our next hearing, which will be on Thursday. Who's agenda? Thank you very much for being here, aloha.